Good evening and welcome to tonight's December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two Shrewsbury School Committee meeting. My name is Lindsay Heffernan and I'm the Chair of the Committee. First off, I'd like to, as always, thank Liz Poplowski and the members of the Shrewsbury Media Connection for recording and live broadcasting this event. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel twenty-nine between now and our regularly scheduled meeting, which will not take place until the new year on January fourth, and it's also available on the SMC YouTube channel. The first item on our agenda is public participation. This evening, no one has asked to address or expressed an interest in addressing the committee, however, in the future, should anyone wish to speak to this committee, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. And once recognized, speakers can have up to three minutes to present their material. The committee, of course, will also review and consider written comments which may be presented to us before or after the meeting. Next, I have chairperson and members' reports. Do we have anything for this evening? Please.
Just quickly for the members' knowledge, the Beale Early Childhood Building Committee had our last meeting last night. It seems like we've been working on this project for a long time, and it was actually two thousand and sixteen when the project started. We completed it last year, the school opened, but the committee had, you know, other things to finish submitting information through the MSBA, so it was an excellent, excellent committee to work on, too. Ms. Boucher was on the committee as well, along with myself and Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins, and just great architect, LPA, everybody we worked with is just amazing, and it worked out as good as we could anticipate, still under budget, which is the best part of it. So just anybody should know that that project is done.
Thank you very much for representing us so well. Members, yes, please.
I just wanted to say that over the past couple of weeks, I had the pleasure of attending winter concerts at both Shrewsbury High School and Oak Middle School, and I just wanted to congratulate all the student musicians and their teachers. They were both excellent performances, very well done, and it was just nice to see the kids back in action at their music this year in full force. So, yeah, both very, very well done.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I have two, two quick updates, and mostly connected to how this committee works with our, our delegation of the Select Board at the town, the town level, two, two items of note for those who maybe pay, pay attention to our meetings, but not so much to those, those meetings. On December sixth, this committee joined the Board of Selectmen for one of our two required annual meetings to discuss our override stabilization fund, an important piece of looking at our, our budgeting for, for both the schools and, of course, the town. That account is strong and is doing very well, and we had projections by the town manager, Kevin Mizikar, and so those are available up on the town's website. Again, that meeting was on December sixth, and we appreciate the partnership that we have with the, with the Board of Selectmen. In addition, the, the town also hosted an event last night on how they plan to use a public, public hearing, or a public meeting, I suppose, on the distribution of COVID dollars that the town has, and I do want to note and appreciate there is currently that, that plan won't be voted on until the next Board of Select meeting on the twentieth, but currently they are planning for about ninety thousand dollars to support building security and communications for our school. Sadly, of course, we're on the anniversary of the Sandy Hook massacre. We would like to not spend dollars on, in this area, but of course, it's very important, and so I just want to appreciate that partnership that we have. And our next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much, and I also just want to note what an outstanding project, the Beale project, was, and the Building Committee did an excellent job, and all the, the entire team did something that the community can be very proud of, and will serve generations of students for decades to come, as well as be a real asset to the community as a whole. So appreciate that work. I do want to commend and congratulate our Shrewsbury High School eSports team. They, once again, were extremely successful in the fall season. There are two different competitions they had teams in, League of Legends and Rocket League. The League of Legends team won the state championship, took place on Saturday at the Helix eSports venue, which is located at Patriot Place down in Foxborough, and the Rocket League were the state runners-up. So congratulations to the Rocket League students, Robin Oxley-Luster, Alex Anderson, and Vincent Lamb, and the League of Legends team, who were the state champions, John Q., Stephen Hugh, Kenneth Nguyen, Isaac Wolfis, and Callan Fitch. Their coaches, Nick Crefting, who is a science teacher at Shrewsbury High School, and we'll congratulate them on, on all their success. And then the, the final piece, as Ms. Heffernan just mentioned, this is unfortunately a very sad anniversary that ten years ago today, twenty first graders and six educators at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut, were murdered. And as I wrote in my message to the community earlier today, although I wish that we could say that that was a turning point for our nation, it wasn't. As I wrote to you recently, after the Colorado Spring shooting, we've experienced so many more of these awful events over time. I'm hopeful that, as a nation, we will be able to get past some of the arguing of the politics of this approach and, and really look at it holistically and do what we need to do, both for issues regarding addressing student mental health needs and also keeping people from using weapons of war to take the lives of innocent people, especially children. The students in Sandy Hook should be in their junior year of high school. So I certainly remember all too well, ten years ago, sitting in the office at the old Beale Early Childhood Center, ironically, having just visited some kindergarten classes and first grade classes when that news, which was hard to believe, that, you know, you hope it's a rumor or some crazy thing, but the fact that that was a reality, and of course, close enough here to Shrewsbury that very, a lot of similarities in the community and some members of the Shrewsbury community who are directly connected to, to folks in Newtown. So we will continue to do our best. We actually have a meeting, one of our regularly scheduled emergency drills, tabletop drills with our school leadership team and law, local law enforcement and first responders, taking place at our leadership team tomorrow, as a matter of fact. We continue to emphasize that if people feel something is off or think something is not the way it should be, to tell someone in, in the school, whether that's the Shrewsbury Police, the school department, our website has an anonymous tip link on it, the Shrewsbury Police have an anonymous tip line as well. We would rather, obviously, look into something and make sure it's okay than not know that someone feels something might be off. That's one of the best ways we can try to work together to keep our schools as safe as they can be. And it's unfortunate we have to have these conversations, but it is an important anniversary, and I thought it was important to recognize those lives lost ten years ago at Sandy Hook. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sawyer. Our first timed scheduled appointment is a gift to the Colonial Fund, and we'll be seeking a vote this evening. Career Pathways Programming at Shrewsbury High School focuses on career exploration and job, on-the-job training through internships, job shadowing, summer employment, and potentially long-term employment. SHS hopes to make this new and multifaceted approach to career exploration and future goals, goal planning, available to all interested high school students during their junior and senior years. The Colonial Fund's recent Giving Tuesday fundraising initiative focused on generating funds for the career pathways programming, and per our school committee policy, we do have two gifts received of over five thousand dollars, which must be formally accepted by the school committee. One beloved and well-known to us, Dr. Dale McGee, our former colleague here on school committee, and his wife, Ms. Melanie McGee, and I understand, Dr. Sawyer, another who wishes to remain anonymous. Why don't I turn it over to you before I call for a vote?
Just incredibly grateful to Dr. and Mrs. McGee for their generosity through their charitable fund for a gift of five thousand dollars, and then anonymous donor family here in, in Shrewsbury who also made the same level of donation a couple of years ago and stepped up again for a ten thousand dollar donation. The Colonial Fund has done a lot of outstanding work in, in funding, a lot of really innovative things that we've been able to do over the last several years, and our Giving Tuesday campaign was to, as you mentioned, Ms. Heffernan, to focus on this work that we are building up at the high school level relative to career exploration and internships and job shadowing that Dr. Lazzard has been leading in conjunction with the leadership at the high school. Mr. Sidlo is also here this evening, and this money will be able to help us with things like transportation, access for students, and particularly, it's important to us, especially given our mission as a public school district, that access to sort of learning about careers and being able to visit different types of places is not just left to those students who may have a family situation that provides that kind of networking and access, but students who may not be, have access to that through their public education to be able to access those kinds of things is a really important pathway to equity, we believe, as well. So we're very pleased that we're able to, to get these donations. We did hit the twenty thousand dollar goal that we had with other donations that were under five thousand dollars, but this fifteen thousand dollars made up the, the majority of, of the funding, and again, on behalf of the school district, I'm extremely grateful and certainly recommend the school committee vote to accept the donations.
And I know I speak for my colleagues in expressing our, our gratitude to the community. Any other comments before we call for a vote? All right. If I can, then have a motion for the school committee to vote to accept a five thousand dollar donation from the, from the McGee Fund and a ten thousand dollar donation from an anonymous donor to the Colonial Fund to support the career pathways programming for Shrewsbury High School students.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, and again, with our sincere gratitude. Our next item on the agenda is a timed scheduled appointment on our strategic planning update for twenty twenty-three and through twenty twenty-seven, and certainly welcome one of our guests here, Ms. Carrie Purcell, the Managing Director of Focus Schools. And to just lay a little foundation for those who are listening, the Shrewsbury Public Schools continues its work to create an updated strategic plan for the next five years as the current plan comes to its conclusion in this school year, and the district has partnered with a consulting firm, Focus Schools, to assist in identifying strengths and needs and to ensure the receipt of a robust input from all of our stakeholders. So we're happy to have you join us this evening and share work to date and any other, any other process or progress. Dr. Sawyer, is there anything else that you'd like to help lay the foundation for here?
Just to say that we've really enjoyed working with Focus Schools with both Ms. Purcell and Ashley Santiago, the other consultant who's been working with us, met with a variety of different iterations of our leadership teams over the last several weeks, and including today with our full district leadership team, just this afternoon, which is all of our central office administrators, principals, assistant principals, department directors, curriculum leaders, and I thought it was a very, each time, I think they've been able to facilitate conversations that are really helping us think about what is, we need to center as the most important work that we'll be doing for the next five years. But with your permission, I'll turn it over to Ms. Purcell, and she can give an update on the process.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to the school committee members for having me tonight. I send my best wishes from our colleague, Ashley Santiago. She's not feeling well this evening, and so I'm going to do my best to represent us both by giving you what we think is a, sort of a simple update on where we've been so far and sort of where we're going next. We have sort of three things we want to accomplish tonight. Number one, to sort of review where we've been so far since our partnership with Shrewsbury Public Schools has, has started, and then spend a little bit of time outlining next immediate steps, which is what we hope to start immediately following winter break, with a little bit of closure around, so what will final steps look and sound like? So that's what we're going to frame our time together tonight. Just a reminder for all of us, when we think about strategic planning, the end goal for strategic planning in public schools or at schools across the country is really to make sure that we create a plan that's in service of students. So all of our conversations, all of our research, all of the data that we're looking at is really to identify, how do we best serve the students of Shrewsbury Public Schools? What does that look like? What does that sound like? What's working, what's not working, and how are we going to proceed with both? We really think about sort of these three buckets, and those buckets include, what does that mean for leadership? What does that mean for learning? And what does that mean for the optimization of resources? So as we start these conversations, we're always keeping those buckets and that end goal in mind. And so when we think about how our partnership started and what we've accomplished up till three fifteen today, we have a list of things that we'd like to discuss with you tonight. So what really made us so happy is when we were lucky enough to be awarded this opportunity to serve you all. It was evident that the district really believes in this idea of collaboration, and for us, we are here to serve you, and so having the opportunity to truly collaborate, to build a plan together, and for us just to serve as the facilitators of this process is just really a joy. And so we know when this project is complete and we give you your final product, that it's going to be your voices that are inside that document, it's going to be your story, and we're going to gift you with the best kind of facilitation that we can give you in order to make that happen. And so initially, right off the bat, we had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Sawyer and really sort of go over what we think would work, listen to Dr. Sawyer regarding what he, what he thought you needed, and then together build this really robust plan that we think is moving along quite nicely. Immediately also, we were given the access to all sorts of data. We believe and we know that data is just a number unless you do something with it, and so it's our, our responsibility to have a look at that data, to really think about what are the strengths, what are the opportunities, and what are we going to do with all of that information to move this plan forward? And so right now, we're in the midst of really mining through all of that data, and we'll talk about what's going to happen when we're finished mining with that here in a moment. With the opportunity, about a month ago, I think, to meet with a wide variety of people in a community forum, to hear a little bit about hopes and dreams, to think a little bit about your mission and your portrait of a graduate, and how those two foundational pieces sort of feed into the strategic plan and how the strategic plan also feeds into those, those pieces, because those are longstanding. That's what you aspire to do. A portrait of graduate is what you're hoping for all students, and so we're using those to sort of anchor the work, and that community forum really got those conversations going. Following that, we had the opportunity to Zoom with each and every one of you, to hear from you, what you're hoping for, not only in the plan, but what you're hoping for from us, and your hopes and dreams for the future of this district moving forward. So we, we used all of that information to identify some patterns and trends, which led us to a school committee workshop where we started to really look at your current priorities, because one of the things we've heard loudly and clearly from anybody that we've talked to is, we have a lot of really good stuff in place, and we don't want to throw out all of those good things for a simple rewrite of a whole bunch of other things. So we decided to really take a deep look at your current goals connected to your priorities and to identify what we think needs to stay in place, what we think needs modified, and what we think we've completed or needs abandoned. And so first group to come to bat and sort of dig in and roll up our sleeves with school committee, we got, we got a lot of great information. We moved on then to repeat that process with your school leadership team, and today we put sort of the bow on that with the district leadership team, who took the information from both school committee and SLT, and sort of made some decisions around, we can't do all of these things, so what are those high-impact goals or strategies that are going to support our priorities and support the mission and portrait of a graduate that currently exists? And I'll tell you, they did a really great job of prioritizing and narrowing and combining and quarter-turning, so we'll be able to share that with you all really soon. Also, super important to us is what Brene Brown says, that clear is kind, communication is everything. What people don't know, they're going to make it up, and so we have this sort of promise or policy that we will communicate with you summaries and information within twenty-four hours of whatever occurs. And so not only is that the work that we're doing to date, but that's also work that we're, that we're going to do moving forward. We stand by that promise to do that for you all. So, shall I pause now or wait till the very end? Probably wait till the very end, and I'll keep going with immediate next step. So remember, immediate next steps are following winter break. So what are we going to tackle when everyone returns from a well-deserved rest? By that time, we will have the conclusions that we've drawn from any of the data that you have shared with us thus far, and we'll try to capture those conclusions in three buckets. What's the good news, based on all of this data that we've looked at? What's the urgent news or important news, things that we ought to consider moving forward? And what do we think might be some bold next steps for consideration? So that's how we'll sort of frame that in a user-friendly way for you to look at. Also, we're super excited in January to start our forums, our staff surveys, some small group conversations, in order to continue to elicit from your community what everyone's hopes and dreams are moving forward. So we're super excited to be able to talk to various groups, to parents, to staff, and to students, and, as well as other groups that, you know, we think come along that will be important for us to talk to, and we're going to make sure we do it in a couple of ways. So we're going to make sure that we have available ways to do it via Zoom or online. We're going to make sure that we also have available ways for people to complete surveys, and certainly, we're also going to make available these in-person conversations. That allows more people to engage, and it also allows for people to engage in ways that are comfortable to them. With the help of the district, we'll also be conducting another thought exchange with some key questions to gather information, and so that will be sort of between the forums and the surveys and, and the various ways of talking and meeting with people, along with thought exchange, we're going to have a whole, a whole lot of additional information that's going to guide sort of this next step. Once we finish all of that, we'll present to the various groups some early recommendations we have about moving forward, forward, excuse me, with strategic plan sort of two-point-oh. These will just be recommendations that will guide the conversations, that will lead us to the final steps, which really talk about completing the document, so completing the story. What does this look like for the next five years? We will work side by side to do that, to make sure all the pieces and parts of the strategic plan are developed, that the document is not six thousand four hundred pages, because no one's going to read six thousand four hundred pages, but rather succinct sort of front-back story of the work moving forward. Along with that, something really important to us that we leave for you is a way to inspect what you expect. And so by that, we mean, if we have these priorities, if we have these goals, if we have these actions, how do we really know they're working? And so we want to help you set up really key times to measure impact so that you can celebrate progress and/or adjust as needed those action steps to make sure the work is moving forward. So that's another piece that we promised to leave with you and to work alongside of you to figure out exactly how to rule that out. And then we'll package all of that together, leave you with a final product, and wish you the very best as you launch this and continue to do the great work for every student, every day, in every classroom, no exception. So with that, I would like to open this up. If you have any questions or comments or wonders, sometimes I talk quickly, so if you need me to go back and, and repeat, happy to do that. So I'm going to be quiet and open it up to all of you.
Thank you. Colleagues, any, any questions? I know we've been in many meetings already, but go ahead.
Just a comment. I'm really happy that we, we talked, do we need a consultant? Yes, no, and I am so glad that we went with having a consultant to shepherd us through all of this. I think Dr. Sawyer, his team is, got a lot on their plates already and are very busy, so this will just help us get through this work and this process in a much faster and, like you said, more succinct way, so we can get it done and start working on it. So thank you for everything that you and your team are doing.
Of course. Yeah, it's an honor. And, and really, you know, because we're facilitating, then they can be thinking about the work and working on the work and planning for the work and not organizing, and, right? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
I think one of the things that strikes me is that I just want to sort of challenge us as a, as a district to think really hard about in the, really, in the month of January, it sounds like it's going to be a busy, busy month, as we think about those focus groups and other ways to engage our community, it's critically important to me that we hear a lot of voices. I was excited about the turnout that we had a, a few weeks ago, and at the same time, a little disappointed by the turnout, because I wanted to hear more, more people's perspectives or, or voices that I hadn't heard before. And so I'm thinking about, you know, what languages are we going to translate things into? We, we had a presentation recently that Portuguese is the number-one language that we do translations for, for our parents, and, and that tool that I cannot for the life of me remember right now, that you, you've begun to use to do texting to families.
Talking points.
Talking points, thank you, right? That we use some of those opportunities that we have already in the district to, again, ensure that we're hearing from communities who, and important stakeholder groups that sometimes might miss some of this information, as, as much as I know, we try to think about all the different ways to translate, but that we kind of get things out to ways that people can really, really digest. And I would just call out what I've really enjoyed about working with you and what I hope for, for our next plan, is not only that we have ambitious and, and, and goals that people can understand, is that we have metrics to monitor them and to know if we're going to be successful, and to know for, whether it's us or the next generation of us who are sitting in these seats, to know, how are we doing? And, and I think that's a, that's a space where I know we have, we have some growth to do, and that's, that's also going to be hard in January, February, I forgot what those are, but I look forward to having you walk us through this. Dr. Sawyer, what else, what else would you like to add for this process?
I, I think that's really very important that during this next phase, we get as many voices as we can. Certainly, I know you mentioned that, the tool that we've used with, with some really good success in a variety of ways, which is thought exchange, because that will not only allow people to participate and share their perspective in kind of an open-ended way, but also weigh the importance of what other people are saying, too, so we're able to see sort of rises to the top in terms of what people's priorities are. That will be an important part of, of it as well, but also, I, you know, having those face-to-face conversations, it will be really important in making sure we have student voice, making sure we have parent and caretaker voice, making sure we have, you know, opportunities for our staff in different ways to, to weigh in on what they think is most important, and hopefully, start to coalesce around some things that people feel are really the ways we want to be spending our time and our energy and our resources in the, in the coming years. So looking forward to the work, and it is very helpful. I appreciate the school committee engaging with Focus Schools because it is certainly helping us stay focused in, you know, a lot of the pieces that otherwise Ms. Clodder would be working on, she's able to, to, you know, focus on advancing some of the curriculum and instructional work that's so important that we're still doing under our current plan. And it'll be interesting to see what we keep, what we continue, what we might change a little bit up, or, you know, maybe similar theme, but new goals, but I think it's a very exciting time, and the fact that I think a lot of really outstanding things happened as a result of some good planning five years ago. It's exciting to think about how we can really make sure that this plan serves our students and our, our school community well. So looking forward to the continued work.
And I would just want my colleagues to know, I really appreciate how quick you've been when we've, when I've been able to make a connection for you to follow up on those, and so connect it up with the new, new, newer president of the CPAC, our Special Parent Advisory Council, and I know you're immediately following up with emails and trying to get, again, those voices, so as we and others think about ways to make sure we do amplify those voices, we, I appreciate the follow-up, because we, we're all a little busy, so thank you.
Of course, of course. You know, and, and if we do our job well, when the new strategic plan comes out, no one will ask, what is this thing? What are you talking about? Because we have communicated and allowed conversations to come back, right? That's the ultimate goal for this just to be, oh, yeah, I remember talking or seeing something about that, and now I can lean into it. So that, that, that would be our promise and our, and our hope for all of this.
And I appreciate for those listening, you should have seen this in all of the principal newsletters, have been noted some of your handouts, and so hopefully, people are starting to lean in and hear from, from what our, our normal communications, right, that that with us is embedded in there, too. So thank you very much for joining us this, this evening. If no one else has any other questions, we're, we're going to see you in January. I think a lot.
That's right. You're so welcome. Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
So we're waiting on some presenters, so maybe we take them, uh, out of order?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Not a problem at all. I, so we're going a little out of order, and, one second, we, on a matter of finance and oper, and operations... Um, and uh, one second, we, uh, on a matter of finance and oper- um, and operations, uh, want to, our out-of-district special education school tuition increase. And I um want to posit a potential vote for my, for my colleagues. And just as a, a level setting for those who are, who are tuning into this issue, it is new and sort of hot or fresh, I suppose. The Massachusetts Operational Services Division, known as OSD, um, within DESI, that is a department within DESI.
No, it's a separate term, DESI.
Oh, it's within A and F, thank you, colleagues. Um, is responsible for setting tuition prices for more than two hundred approved special education programs in approximately a hundred private schools. Uh, and this price setting is necessary to accommodate students with needs that cannot be met uh by their current school district. OSD recently made a recommendation for a fourteen percent inflation factor increase for out-of-district special education school tuitions for the next fiscal year. And the, the impacts on districts will vary, but expected to be pretty significant on our, on our budget um for all districts, but also for Shrewsbury. I wonder, Dr. Sawyer, if you want to provide any more context here um before I turn to what I hope my colleagues will appreciate as a vote.
Sure, no, I would, I would be happy to.
Thank you.
In, in terms of the uh, this situation, it's really unusual and it's something that I know that the various state associations uh for, uh, certainly the Superintendent Association, the, the School Business Leaders Association, uh, known as MASBO, um, have been uh focusing on this and uh asking us to uh communicate with government officials about our concerns. Uh, you know, there's certainly no question that the, the needs around the, uh, what happened during the pandemic required some really extraordinary funding uh situations from the state. And the state did uh grant directly uh to uh these uh approved private special education schools uh significant uh amounts so that they could remain open. Uh, they, you know, certainly a critically important job that they do for students whose uh needs are such that they require uh either a day program in a very specialized environment um or in some cases, a residential program. Um, and this is something we've talked about certainly a lot over the years in terms of the work that we do. Uh, and, you know, certainly we try to educate our students within our school community wherever we can. Uh, but there are some uh situations where we, we do not have the resources to meet those students' needs. Um, and hence, uh, we pay tuition uh for the uh out-of-district uh approved special education schools. Each year, under uh state law and regulation, uh, the Operational Service Division sets, or they, they give what's, what's known as an inflation estimate. Um, and the, the sort of normal course of business has been uh that that estimate uh gets calculated and, and shows up in the governor's initial budget at the state level. And remains, it's never been in my experience that it's, that it's changed at all. Um, and it's calculated typically using, you know, typical means such as uh inflation factors that uh, uh, the Consumer Price Index and, and whatnot. You know, when you look historically, you're, and of course, we're in a low inflation environment generally for up until recent times. Um, these kinds of increases year over year um range from a fraction of one percent, quarters of one percent, as high as two, two and a half percent, two and three quarters percent. Um, so when that notification was made this fall, that that inflation factor was going to be fourteen percent, uh, that was really, uh, and, and these are, um, you know, on a, on a statewide basis, a, a huge amount of money out of the state budget and out of local uh school district budgets. Um, it's going to have a really significant impact. Um, and it turns out what uh Operational Service Division did was they did the sort of typical inflationary factors, which came up actually a little over five percent. Uh, but then beyond that, uh, they added what they called an eight point eight-two percent workforce stability factor, uh, which they basically took the amount of money that they had given in different workforce grants um and then sort of are filling that hole, uh, you know, for these schools. Uh, which is an understandable uh thought. However, the, the legislation itself, or the, the law itself and the, and the regulations indicate that when OSD sets this rate, it's to consider sort of all parties, both the needs of those schools, uh, but also the, the uh impact on local school districts in terms of their budget. Uh, and how that can be balanced out and, and the general sense, and I agree, um, is that this amount is, is far beyond uh what would be a sort of reasonable year-over-year increase. Uh, the impact on, you know, different districts is going to vary, of course, depending on the number of students they have. It's something that we're working on calculating. Uh, but uh, I would suggest and I advocate that the school committee uh empower Ms. Heffron as the chair. Um, and I can work with her certainly with the details and, and the information, ask him, Mr. Collins, uh, around some of the specifics about how this may impact Shrewsbury. But to ask that this be uh looked at carefully and, and considered for whether an adjustment can be made when the governor's budget's actually uh released, which will be a little later this year than a typical year when there's a new governor. That usually happens in February as opposed to late January when it's not an election year. Um, and then uh also send it to our delegation, Representative Kane, uh Senator Moore, the Department of Education, Secretary of Education, who's certainly aware of it and is suggesting that we make sure that our legislators are aware of it. Uh, the uh, if there, if there's going to be a new Secretary of, of the Elementary and Secretary of Education Board, um, just a variety of people at the state government level in terms of whether this can be moderated to some degree or phased in over time or ultimately that there are some sort of element of uh an, an ability for the state to fill that hole for local districts. Excuse me, um, because it will have an impact. Um, our circuit breaker reimbursement would pick up the following year. Um, that would go and go a long way towards, you know, moderating that. The concern is that this is such a large number on a statewide level that circuit breaker, I mean, it would, it would be a huge impact on the state budget in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five um to be able to increase circuit breaker that amount. But that, there's a sort of one-year gap period where local districts, the burden falls on them. So that's a bit of the information around uh what it's involving. Um, I appreciate the school committee's interest in um being able to advocate for folks to look at this and find a way to mitigate this impact on our school districts as well as other school districts across the state. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that committee members have.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And for my colleagues, my, my thinking here is that, um, as Dr. Sawyer has said, reaching out to all the various um stakeholders at the, at the state level in both the legislative and the executive branches to express both our uh the impact that this has at the local level. Um, and it's not that we don't want kids to, it's not that we don't think that there are workforce impacts. We, we certainly appreciate those and understand those, but uh the impact to our budget, and I will be honest, a fourteen percent inflationary factor never goes away either. So if there's a one-year, you know, way to sort of help us fill, fill a budgetary hole this year, those will be built in to future tuition increases and so to really call for um uh some examination of, of how to go about this. But why don't I pause and see if there are any comments or questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of this communication. Um, I know we're in a different position, uh, you know, after the override, but I, I think about what we'd be facing if, if that wasn't the case. This is a significant increase uh in a year where we also are, you know, working on a new transportation contract. The two of them combined i- is a significant impact to our budget and I, I, I support this.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Fritz, please.
I think we absolutely have a fiduciary responsibility to our community to write a letter to, at the state level because it, it is a severe impact to us and we never know if the state will fully fund circuit breaker into that level. So that's always a guess, so I think we absolutely need to do this.
Thank you.
I also am fully supportive of this and I would encourage the chair to be as obviously respectful and polite, but as, as thorough and clear as possible in, in communicating, especially both to a new administration and also the Operational Services Division, which is, is a procurement entity. It's, it's concerned with what is appropriate to purchase and that is the lens through which things are viewed. Uh, it is, as was discussed a few moments ago, it's not a sub-element of, or it's not organized under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Their expertise is not K through twelve districts. Uh, and for folks who are evaluating contracts and what is and is not appropriate to purchase, the impact of something like this uh on the rest of our educational programming, I think, may, may well be news. So I think we need to make sure we're joining uh with other districts in the same situation to be speaking loudly and clearly. So I not only support this, but I would encourage the chair to be um uh very free with your pen when you draft this.
Firm. Anything you'd like to add? Yeah, and I, I do note that our, our incoming governor did just uh appoint the member of her cabinet on A and F. So we at least have some, some names to put at the head, at this letterhead. Then if uh there's not, no further discussion, um, I'd uh seek a motion for the committee to vote to authorize the chair to draft a letter on behalf, on, on their behalf, excuse me, um, to the Operational Services Division, um, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the district's uh state legislative delegation and the incoming governor Haley administration regarding a proposed fourteen percent tuition increase for out-of-district special education placements for the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. I look forward to our drafting with you, Dr. Sawyer, over the holidays. Um, if, should we want to take a pause or we could?
I think we're good.
I think we're good. Okay, great. Um, then I'm going to go back on our agenda a little bit and uh welcome a bunch of folks who are here tonight. Um, and this, our next item on the agenda is the Sleep Health Advisory Committee, a report on options for school start times. Folks are welcome to come and join us up at the, up at the table uh for those tuning in. We have representatives from the Sleep Health Advisory Committee uh here to present a report that summarizes the overall work of the committee and its task groups, for which there are many, and uh presents two options for potential school schedule changes for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year that would result in later start times in order to provide the opportunity for more sleep for students. Um, and I will note is that as you're all settling in, feedback from students, parents and caretakers and staff will be sought through a survey sent out uh tomorrow um as well as through a public forum that we plan to hold on uh January fourth here at the school committee. We all did receive a substantial report and I want to thank the many folks who are here with us tonight who have, who have drafted that. Dr. Sawyer, can I turn it over you to, if you want further introduction on this topic?
Sure, and I think, and I want to make sure everybody has their name card. I think that, or sorry, Sandra's going to grab hers, I think she just got it, um, so people at home know who you are. Uh, as I mentioned at a, a previous meeting when the, when the task groups were presenting, uh, I, I've continued to receive feedback that this has just been an outstanding uh process. Uh, this group of uh community members and educators and students um has done a really outstanding job of uh going through a really complex topic, doing some outstanding research, reaching out to other places, um, and ultimately coming up with a, a lot of information that's already been presented to the school committee. And now this evening to be able to present uh some uh potential options for schedule changes that would be able to achieve a, a goal of allowing uh more opportunity for adolescents in particular uh to gain more sleep, uh to, to better align with the science. And I, many people were able to tune in on Monday evening with Dr. Judith Owens, uh, who was a, or who is rather, a uh professor at Harvard Medical School in neurology and also a uh practicing pediatrician at Boston Children's Hospital, who's one of the foremost experts on sleep health of young people and adolescents in particular and research around school start times. Uh, that was recorded, we are going to share that link out tomorrow with folks so they can watch it. They weren't able to watch it live. Excuse me. We'll also have a, a webpage tomorrow dedicated with all the different reports that have been made up to date, including this evening, um, as well as a link to a survey that people will be able to take. And I know they'll be talking about opportunities for feedback. Uh, but the report that's in your packet, I think, is extremely well-done. I think it lays out um the, the rationale and what these two different options are and what some of the uh benefits and challenges associated with them. And uh, there's a, a terrific group of folks to present to you this evening. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to them.
You may, welcome.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, maybe we go down the line and introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Perfect.
Thank you. Hi, John Kelly, Principal of Sherwood.
I'm Guinevere Molina, I am both a teacher at Beal and a parent of three students in our district.
I'm Sarah Russell, I'm a parent of a ninth grade student and a second grade student.
I'm Toral Pareek, I'm the parent of a tenth grader and a eighth grader.
I'm Sandra Jacati, I'm a sophomore at the high school.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sawyer, members of school committee. Uh, we also want to thank those at home that are watching. Um, this has been, uh, as Dr. Sawyer was saying, a lot of work, uh, but we're grateful to be here tonight. We also want to thank those of you in the community that uh shared your feedback. That was a instrumental part in our work. We know that this is an important topic, um, a topic of sleep health for our students, for the well-being of our students. We also know that any recommendation we make, any decision that is made will significantly impact or potentially significantly impact the community. Um, so we are again grateful to be here tonight. We're going to start first with some objectives and talk about what we plan to uh, what we plan to uh report tonight. So the first is looking at the purpose. Uh, so what is the purpose for researching and discussing a change in school start times? Some people might be wondering that, what's the reasons behind that? Um, second is we will be providing some considerations of the Sleep Health Advisory Committee. Uh, we will also be reviewing options tonight and then we will also be discussing next steps and a timeline. So over the last thirty years, the topic of sleep health has received much attention by sleep researchers. Uh, there have been numerous studies over the last few years returning data that clearly shows the importance of sleep as an essential pillar of human health. Um, as you'll note, expert physicians on the American Academy for Sleep Medicine, the National Sleep Foundation, the Academy, American Academy for Pediatrics support children between the ages of thirteen and eighteen need eight to ten hours of sleep per night. Also, most teenagers do not get that recommended amount of sleep and early school start times are a contributor to that. Um, I can say that not only as a principal of middle school uh students, but also a parent of both high school and middle school students as well. Uh, thirdly, decreased sleep impacts health, mental health, safety and academic achievement. And third, neighboring districts including Westboro and Northboro have successfully changed school start times. I think it's also important to note that since the nineteen nineties, uh, since there's been a number of studies regarding sleep health, there have been in the United States over two hundred and fifty schools or districts uh in forty-five states that have adjusted uh or delayed their start times as a result of this same research. So beyond looking at national data, beyond looking at uh what the researchers said over the past thirty years, it's important to start with our students. Um, so the graph here shows uh some data. This was collected from the December twenty twenty-one Regional Youth Health Survey. This is a annual survey conducted by Central Mass Regional Health. Uh, this data shows for you, uh, on an average school night, how many hours of sleep our students get, both at the high school and at Oak. High school students are noted there in red, uh, Oak Middle School students are noted there in blue. What's important to note here is that with the current high school start time of seven thirty-five AM, only twenty percent of high school students report getting the recommended eight to ten hours of sleep per night. Approximately thirty percent report getting seven hours of sleep per night and fifty percent report getting six or few hours of sleep per night.
So the work of our Sleep Health Advisory Committee, uh, we were formed to work on ways to improve our sleep health as part of the Shrewsbury Public School District's goals back in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two. Um, however, with, uh, excuse me, with the category of enhanced well-being for all. Unfortunately, COVID got in our way and our committee was reorganized this September. The committee is made up of five task groups that we've alluded to earlier. Those include the research, feedback, practices in other districts, childcare and logistics task groups. Each of our groups has done some extensive research, considered a lot of variables, developed in-depth reports, which were presented to the school committee in November ninth and thirtieth of this year. Uh, the work of each task group has been used to develop um what this committee regards as viable options for adjustments to school start times and scheduling operations. I'd like to note at this point that we had well over thirteen variations of plans and we decided to narrow it down to our two bestsellers. Um, here's a look at our current school start and end times. Our schools um are grouped together by the high school, our two middle schools together, and then all of our elementary schools. Um, we currently uh start and end, as you can see here, you don't need me reading them all. Uh, but high school starts as early as seven thirty-five, our middle schools are beginning at eight o'clock, and elementary schools begin their instructional day at nine o'clock. The length of our school days currently vary with high school students um working on their instructional hours for six hours, twenty-five minutes. Middle schools at six hours, thirty-five minutes, and our elementary schools at six hours and fifteen minutes. Um, and it's important to note that the instructional day, when I talk to my children about this, this evening, um, first question one of my boys had was, uh, so does that mean the time when we're like walking in the door and all the dismissal times? So this is just our instructional time, it does not include arrival and dismissal times. Um, the time between our tiers or how the busing works in between these brackets um varies too. So, uh, and part of that is because our schools start, our school days are different lengths, so the time between the bus loops also has to change. So currently, the high school morning bus pickups begin as early as six nineteen in the morning. That was surprising to many of us. Um, the just, the time between the high school and middle schools uh in the morning is twenty-five minutes, in the afternoon is thirty-five. And then from middle schools to elementary schools, um, the gap in the morning is sixty minutes between routes and the afternoon is forty minutes. minutes between routes, and the afternoon is forty minutes. We've noted the middle school time there in red because that's where we're finding some difficulties in getting the bus routes accomplished in that short window of time. Here we have a graph that looks at, or a chart that looks at our time on campus for our educators, and that varies a bit. So our high school educators are in the building and required to be on campus, starting at seven twenty AM and leaving at seven thirty. Middle schools are seven forty-five AM till two fifty-five PM, and then our elementary school educators are on campus from eight thirty AM to three thirty PM. The length of our school days varies slightly with our high school and middle school educators required to be on campus for seven hours, ten minutes, and elementary school educators for seven hours. We've noted before that, I really have to speak on behalf of my colleagues, we are working far beyond our seven or seven hours, ten minutes. So some of us choose to come in early in the morning, some are there late at night or later in the evening. We're certainly doing plenty of work on the weekends and holidays as well. So these requirements are for our professional educators, which include teachers, counselors, nurseless, and specialists, and it's guided by our, our contract or collective bargaining agreement. Like I said, educators are working beyond these hours, but this is the time that we're on campus, we're using this to meet with our students. High school students are getting extra help, maybe making up for quizzes and tests. Our elementary educators are getting kids started in the morning, welcoming them to the building, working on some intervention time. So it's useful time with our students, but it does go beyond our student workday. So high school educators are required to arrive to campus fifteen minutes before the start of the school day, and remain there thirty additional minutes after student dismissal. Middle school educators are also required to be there fifteen minutes prior to the student's start time, and because their day is ten minutes longer, middle school educators remain at least twenty minutes after student dismissal. And for our elementary educators, we arrive thirty minutes before the official start of the day, and remain at least fifteen minutes after students are complete with their educational Transportation is one of the things that our logistics task force delved into quite a bit, there's a lot of numbers and great information here. We have four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight registered bus riders across all areas of our school district. Our contract with AA Transportation is to operate a three-tiered busing system comprised of forty-eight buses that complete a total of two hundred and forty-seven bus routes each day. Our conversations naturally are, we'll just add more bus routes, we'll get this done a ton faster. When we looked at the numbers, we saw that each additional bus would cost us eighty-seven thousand dollars annually, which we'll talk more about how that limits us later. Currently, there's insufficient time between the busing tiers to allow the buses to complete their routes, especially between the high school and middle school routes. And as a result, the first high school student bus pickup, as we said earlier, is as early as six nineteen in the morning, which is more than a full hour before their school day starts at seven thirty-five. Like Mr. Kelly said, we're feeling that in my house.
All right, this committee has come to a consensus that two new options that would move start times later are viable and deserve strong consideration. A third option is always available, and that's to make no change, to keep the start times as they are. But because of the many variables that we've just discussed, for the two options that we're going to present tonight, we sought to follow several guiding principles. So, one, we wanted to provide a longer biologically necessary and well-timed sleep opportunity for high school students, while also maintaining or increasing the length of sleep opportunities also afforded to the middle schoolers and elementary school students. We wanted to maintain a general pattern of the busing tiers without having to add additional buses in order to avoid cost increases. And we saw value in equalizing time between all of the busing tiers and allotting forty minutes to allow adequate time for the buses to complete their routes, and this would help to avoid the excessively early bus pickups for the high school students. Number five, we found value in standardizing the length of the school day across all schools, and that helped us to achieve the forty-minute bus tiers. And we certainly wanted to recognize and consider the impact that the changes in school schedule can have on family and staff childcare. Number seven, we wanted to, we wanted to avoid having the high school end their school day so late that it significantly impacts their co-curriculars, after-school employment, ability to get extra help, or provide sibling care to families who take advantage of that. And eight, we wanted to avoid having students, especially elementary school students, waiting in the morning or getting dropped off in the afternoon in the dark. And we just want to make it clear that at this point, this advisory committee is not recommending any particular option, but rather that we wanted to bring forward these highly feasible possibilities and share with you their benefits and challenges as we see it. Okay, so for option A, here we maintain the current order of school start times, but all the school start times have shifted later. So for the high school, we've shifted twenty minutes later for a start time of seven fifty-five AM and dismissing at two twenty PM. For the middle schools, we've shifted thirty-five minutes later, starting at eight thirty-five AM and dismissing at three PM. And for the elementary schools, shifting fifteen minutes later for a start time of nine fifteen AM and dismissal of three forty PM. And that also shifts the educator time on campus, as you can see there, for high schools, seven forty AM to two fifty PM, middle schools, eight twenty AM to three thirty PM, and elementary schools, eight forty-five AM to three fifty-five PM. So this option has several benefits and some challenges. The benefit here is that high school students will increase their sleep opportunity by thirty-five minutes if they ride the bus, because they will also be afforded fifteen minutes in not being picked up extra early as they are now. And those who currently drive or dropped off by car will gain twenty minutes. Also, at the middle school level, we'll see a thirty-five minute increase in their sleep opportunity. High school and middle school students will be home before the elementary school students to help with childcare. And with this option too, there's a logistical advantage we felt by having high school dismiss first, because the way the campus is laid out, all the buses can be loaded and dismissed at the same time, which helps the buses get started on their routes in a timely manner. Staff are less likely to need care for their own children before school, since they'll be coming in a little later. We see minimal impact to afternoon activities for all the grade spans, and we expect that most bus pickups and drop-offs are likely to occur during adequate daylight. In terms of challenges, other than not making any change, this option provides the smallest increase in sleep opportunity. Staff with younger children will likely incur a greater need for childcare in the afternoon since their day will be shifted a little later. Middle school at Sherwood may need to add an extended school care program in the morning since they'll be starting later, and the elementary school teachers' required time on campus increases from seven hours up to seven hours and ten minutes.
So this is the second option, option B. The one big difference between option A and B is that the middle school and high school tiers, tiers are switched, so we're starting with middle schools, but the time stays the same. A lot of the benefits and challenges from option A are similar in option B. High school students will increase their sleep time by sixty minutes to an hour fifteen, depending on how they get to school, and the middle school sleep cycle will stay relatively the same because their start time is only five minutes earlier. High school students will also get home before elementary school, so they can help out with childcare at home if needed, and staff are also less likely to need care for their kids before school. With option B, there's also a minimal impact for afternoon activities for elementary students, and the last stated benefit is that the pickups and drop-offs will likely occur during adequate daylight. Moving on to challenges, because middle school starts first before high school, the busing is gonna be a challenge because you would have to move the timetable, and even in dismiss, specifically in dismissal, because you would start at the middle school, everything would have to be reconfigured so that all the buses are leaving in a timely manner. At the high school, there's an increased potential impact on the afternoon activities. For, so at staff who are at the high school and the elementary school with younger children, they may need, there's a greater need for childcare in the afternoon, and also, middle school may need extended care in the morning. And the last stated challenge is that the elementary school staff day increases by ten minutes to seven hours and ten minutes. So this is just a comparison of all of the options. The orange represents high school, green, middle schools, and purple, elementary schools. The black text are the start and end times, and the blue text are, is the duration that staff and students have to stay at school. I'm not gonna go over all of it because it was already reviewed and it's a lot, but one thing to note is that for option A and B, the student time at school stays the same, so it's consistent, and same thing with the staff time. But with the current schedule, it does vary.
So then, in addition to option A and B, we had considered other options such as just switching the elementary start time with high school, because that would optimize the amount of sleep that the high schoolers get. But then, as much as that would get the kids the sleep that they need, it didn't really make sense for everything else. We based that based on the feedback received through the thought exchange survey, and then as well as other districts in the areas in various states that had swapped elementary and high school start times didn't do as well. Also, it became more impactful to family and staff schedules for childcare needs, and it also got in the way more of after-school athletics, co-curriculars, clubs, jobs after school, and taking care of younger siblings, and potentially adding morning extended school care program at Sherwood, and then also required lengthening the afternoon for elementary programs, and then increasing that cost as well. So, in addition to this, there are other things to consider, which we did not really get into, but it's preschool schedules. So the schedules for preschool classes currently at Parker Road Preschool, Beal, and Shrewsbury High School for the Little Colonials have not been part of our work, but if the high school's schedule changes, then the Little Colonial's schedule will need some adjustments due to the fact that the Shrewsbury High School students are part of that program. Similarly, there might need to be adjustments to Parker and Beal as well, but it's not anticipated that it would be a big difference at this point. And this is something that we will keep looking at in the coming weeks if necessary. So, next steps for us, the feedback task group will send out a survey via Survey Monkey, and just to get stakeholder feedback regarding the proposed options that we've done tonight, and then we'll committee, this committee will convene again in January to get the feedback from the school committee, the stakeholders, and then thereafter, we'll come up with an option that makes most sense for the school committee to review. And then practices that can support improvements in sleep hygiene will also be recommended at that time. So the timeline for this is starting tomorrow, December fifteenth, the survey of the stakeholder groups will go out to get feedback on options. Then January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, we'll do a public hearing here to listen to feedback from stakeholders. January eighteenth, another discussion of options by you guys and the potential vote, and then January twenty-fifth, if needed, we'll do another potential additional school committee meeting vote, and then if still nothing comes of it, February first will be the last chance to make this happen. Questions, comments?
Thank you very, very much. I know that there's been this big group behind all of you who's been working on this for quite a while, not behind you physically, but behind you in terms of the advisory committee, and I want to just thank everybody who's participated, between administrators, staff, parents, I think nearly a dozen parents, three high school students, thank you for hearing that perspective, so I think the committee is certainly well composed to get a lot of, a lot of, a lot of input. Questions or comments from my colleagues?
Just also like to thank everybody who's worked on this, and all my years in the committee, I think this is the best report and group that I've seen. It's very data-driven, and you did it in a really short amount of time, and I think for staff, this is additional on top of what you're already doing, so really want to thank the staff, but I really am extremely grateful to parents and students, because this is just a volunteer thing you're doing, and it was a ton of data, you culled through it, and the reports to us, we have a very detailed report, it's very concise, easy to understand as we move through this process, because you looked at all the ripple effects for any changes, and I think that's, for me, as a school committee member, I want to hear more from parents and staff in the community as we move forward, to what they think about the options we're looking at, because change is difficult, I think especially for working families, any change, even could be fifteen minutes, could be a change in their own work schedule and childcare. So lots of things to take into consideration, but I think this is an excellent report, and the data, and it's all data-driven, which I really appreciate, so thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is a very thorough, comprehensive report, and I want to thank you all for all the time and effort that you put into this outside of your, your day-to-day lives. It's, it's a lot of work, I know, you know, we can all pretty much attest to, you know, being on subcommittees over the last several years, it's, it's, it's a lot of time and effort, and I appreciate the passion you put into it. I, I don't think there's been any stone left unturned here. I go back, this is now the third meeting that we've had talking about this topic. In the last meeting, in the booklet, there were forty-two pages of content. We've had four thousand participants in the thought exchange across three, you know, core groups within the school community, you know, teachers and staff, students, and parents and caretakers. We've had outreach to two hundred and sixty childcare facilities to talk about that angle of things. You know, the task groups, as you mentioned, went, went through thirteen variations of, of schedules and whittled it down to two viable options. You know, I'm just very impressed with, with how this has gone, it's a lot to digest, it's a lot to take in. As Ms. Fritz said, I think really, the next step is probably the most critical, is to get the feedback from the community now that we've gone through what those viable options are, because up until now, that feedback, you know, through thought exchange has just been kind of a, an idea like, hey, what if, you know, we had later start times, what would you think? Well, now there are two options on the table to consider, and I'm very curious, the feedback from the public, and encourage everyone out there to respond to that survey, because we do read all of the comments and the feedback, and it's very important to the work that we're doing, so thank you all very much.
To echo the comments of my colleagues, I want to thank the committee for all of your ongoing hard work with this very sometimes difficult topic, and to Mr. Wensky's point, you know, sometimes we go through an exercise when we're exploring how to change something, how to do something differently, and it turns out that there's only one option that will work logistically, or there's only one option that's gonna optimize student safety. This is not such a situation, there are a couple of options that are workable here, so it is important for us to hear from the community, so I would highly encourage community members to engage with that survey as soon as it goes out, participate in it, make sure you send us your thoughts and comments, because as there is more than one workable approach here, and, and we, we definitely need to, to Mr. Wensky's point, hear what community members think here.
Thank you. And I want to just, in addition to my appreciation, note that joining the webinar earlier this week with Dr. Judith Owens and hearing, and yet, being a member of the committee, I thought I kind of like knew this stuff, and then I was still learning other pieces, but, oh, and there's, right, the REM sleep that's later in the night, and so when you wake up in the morning, like, all of the different, different pieces here, and so I think this committee is gonna have, and I'm very curious to hear the, the public's input for us, and parent input and, and staff input, but I also want to appreciate that we have a lot of evidence that suggests some, some change is needed, and so, as, as much as change is hard, I know we're gonna see a lot of that in, in any survey, change is difficult, and we don't want change. And so, I want to just acknowledge that for me, while, while I appreciate that, there's a lot of science that's telling us that we should be doing something, and the data that's most compelling for me is that, and, and, not that I don't respect all the academic literature, but what are, what, what's happening with our own students? And I have a, I have a student at Oak, and I have a student at the high school, and I can attest to like, yep, we're talking about a whole hour difference, and, and somebody whose high school pickup is, is in the six forties, not six nineteen, but still, so that's where, where I'm coming from, and I cannot wait to hear what people think, and appreciate that we now have something for them to really respond to, so the work has just been really quite excellent. Doc, and also, I really appreciate, and I think that's an, an added piece that I'm seeing that the, this group will take up in January, how else do we support sleep beyond just start time? That that's an important, I've learned a lot about screen time late at night. That that's an important, I've learned a lot about screen time late at night, and about diet, and about what else we could maybe be adding in some of our health curriculums or other places to kind of get the word out for both parents, and, but also for our students, because I know that as I talk more about this issue at home, my high schoolers talking more about sleep too, and how important that is, because then he's not going to get injured in athletics as likely, and some other things that are important, so there's a lot of really important work here in, in addition to this. Dr. Sawyer, anything you'd like to add to this?
I, I really want to thank the panel representing the full committee for their presentation this evening. I thought it was excellent. I, I do want to acknowledge some folks who joined us here in, in the room for various, some folks who are part of the advisory committee as well, Administrator Mr. Buzilow is representing the high school administration, Dr. LaZott in her role as superintendent for community partnerships and well-being, Mr. Collins, who really led the logistics part of this, given his role with finance and operations, his assistant director, April Yu, who's in charge of our transportation day-to-day, from the district side of things, is here listening. We appreciate Laura Braun Lush, who's our school psychologist from Spring Street School, who's been a key member of the, of the advisory committee. I want to thank Noreen Christie, who is the president of the Shrewsbury Power Professionals Association, for being here in person to listen to this, because it certainly affects all of our staff in terms of what their hours may be and how things may work for them. And I also want to recognize Ron Erdnwein, who is the president and CEO of AA Transportation, who's joined us in person this evening. AA has been a really important partner to us, obviously on a day-to-day basis. They're, they're a wonderful partner as our transportation vendor for many years now, but Ron and his team have worked closely with Patrick and April in terms of looking at this issue and looking at the structure of our buses and looking at, you know, what that time period in between different levels needs to be. So this has been a huge team effort, and I, I think when people, we'll be sending out the link to the report, that was both the slides that you saw this evening as well as the full report, which I think is very clearly presented in terms of the two options and, and what the benefits and challenges that are associated with each. I want to thank everyone who participated in the initial thought exchange, because that influenced, as some people, you know, in, in the, in the feedback understandably said, well, it's hard to give feedback, and I don't know what the change might be. But we wanted to get some general perspective initially, because that did shape and influence what kinds of, of options were presented. I believe that these options are viable options, I think they make a clear case for that. I think as the school committee has indicated, getting the feedback from our different stakeholders in terms of how they perceive these, what the impact will be, but I, and I'm really hopeful that people in doing that, when we communicate this out, take the time to look at some of the research, watch Dr. Owens' presentation from the other night, and look carefully at the specifics that are in the reports as they give that feedback, rather than, you know, have a position already in mind and give feedback on that. I, I would just ask that people take some time, because it's a really important piece that we're taking on, and ultimately what the school committee decides to do will be based, I know, on what you believe is, what you think is the right thing to do for our students first and foremost, but also taking all these other considerations into account. Not only, as they mentioned, will the Sleep Health Advisory Committee convene in January, look at the feedback themselves, and, and ultimately make a recommendation to the school committee, and, and we'll see if, if we can achieve consensus as to which of these options the advisory committee themselves thinks is the best way forward, and ultimately my responsibility would make a recommendation from my perspective as superintendent. So we'll see how that plays out in January. There's some options to have more time to do that if you need, but it'll be very interesting to see if people coalesce around one or the other options, or, or don't like either and want to keep the, the status quo. But again, I think we have two viable options because it was really thoughtful, thorough work that was done, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing what the feedback is that comes forward.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us. Some of you, you've been here multiple times over the last couple of months, so thank you for your time that you spent on the committee and for coming to share all of that with the, with really the public at large. So have a lovely evening, a happy, happy holiday and winter break. And I have our, our next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes in the school committee meeting held on November 30th as well, of 2020, and the school committee workshop of December 7th, also of 2020. Those were enclosed with our materials. Any comments or edits that need to be made to those? If not, those can be marked as accepted as submitted. We do need to go into an executive session this evening, and so I will be requesting a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of addressing Mass General Law 30A 21A 7 to comply with our Act under the authority of any general or special educate, special law or general grant and aid requirement purpose 7 to the purpose of reviewing, approving, and releasing executive session minutes, and then return to open session only for the purposes of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mr. Palich?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you and good night.